Yes.
We're on.
Okay, Mr. President.
Good morning and welcome to each and every one of you to this week's city council meeting. And at this time, we will turn it over to our very capable city clerk.
This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, February 23rd. We'll have our invocation, please stand for our invocation led by Reverend Vincent Robinson, Wright Way Christian Center Church, and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let me first say thank you all for this opportunity and then commend our city council for keeping prayer as a guiding force to the decisions that we make in this city. I was talking to some pastor friends of mine in other states and they never, they don't even allow this to be done at their city council meetings. And so I then want to commend you, the city council, again. And so let's pray, Father, we invite you into our meetings. We ask you for your wisdom, your knowledge and your counsel. We pray that you got a heart. You said that there's wisdom in the counsel of men and women. And so we thank you for this city council. We pray, God, that you give them the wisdom and the knowledge they need to guide this city in the direction that is best for it and that pleases you. Thank you again, and we give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could, I'd like for us to observe a moment of silence in the memory of Mr. Charles Hope. Charles Hope was a longtime resident of the Plateau Africatown community, one who did not mind working and giving up his resources, not only for the advancement of his family, but for the advancement of his neighbors. I originally met him on a tractor cutting a neighbor's yard who was unable due to ailment to do that themselves. And he and Mr. Leon Jones and others have just been the backbone in many respects of that community. And he passed latter part of last week, and we want to just remember his life, his legacy, his love for Africatown and for the city of Mobile, the Hope family, the community center there in Africatown is named after his father, the Reverend Robert L. Hope. And so we want to say to that family that our thoughts and our prayers are certainly with you and with all families that might be going through hours and days of bereavement. And in addition to that, I think we'd also be remiss, it was remarked on nationally yesterday, but I think it's important that we pay attention to the commemoration of 500,000 lives being lost to this horrendous coronavirus. And certainly, Mobile has had its share, and even in that, God has been faithful and good to spare us to continue to move forward. And we want to encourage citizens to continue to be vigilant, get your vaccines, cover your mouths, stay six feet away, 12 feet from me, and let's continue to pray that God will let us get and see this light at the end of the tunnel. So we could, I know that was a little extended, but I get that way sometimes. Let's observe.
I could add, if I may add someone.
Absolutely, come on, Ms.
Thank you very much. Our executive secretary, who retired after 34 years, Deidre Fairley's dad, Cornice Fairley, passed away, and he was funeralized on Saturday. So if we could take a moment and remember him as well, and in her honor to remember him, a former veteran and had a very productive and long life, but I know he's missed by his friends and family members.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
I would like to also have a word of solemn prayer for Ms. Lois Nero Thompson. Ms. Thompson, she lived in District One, but her business was in District Two. If you take Palm Street down into the bottom, she operated Lois Grocery Store.
Right.
For 50 years. As a matter of fact, under the same roof, she and her husband operated a barber shop, a wash interior, and Lois Grocery Store. She moved here from Monroeville, and she married her husband, Tommy Thompson, who was born about 10 miles from me. And they funeralized her Friday, and I was able to attend the funeral. And I would just like for us to have a, consider her as we have a word of solemn prayer.
Absolutely. Any others? We don't want to miss anybody. If not, then we will observe. Thank you.
Roll call, President Manzi.
Yeah.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning. In response to national, state, and local guidance due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Alabama Open Meetings Act and the Governor's Supplemental Emergency Proclamation, we are meeting remotely. While we are all in different places, we're able to participate as if we were all in the council chambers at Government Plaza. And in keeping with the requirements of the Alabama Open Meetings Act, the public is still able to observe the meeting through the live stream. All items we will address during this meeting are either necessary to respond to COVID-19 or necessary to perform essential minimum functions of the city. The public is still able to present comment to the council by emailing any commentary to cityofclerk@cityofmobile.org up to 30 minutes prior to the meeting. Public comments, which will be acknowledged, distributed to council members, and included in the meeting minutes. All speakers during the various parts of this meeting will be granted three minutes in which to make their presentation. At the end of two minutes, a bell will sound indicating that you have 60 seconds, one minute, to wrap up any and all of your presentation. We're asking that each and every person would observe that rule. As always, the meeting is a live stream, can be viewed through the city's website or on the council's Facebook page. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for your continued interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of February 17th.
So moved.
Okay.
It's probably moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved, thank you.
Communications from the mayor.
Yeah, Council President, this is Jim Barber. The mayor had a conflict in meetings this morning. I'll be making comments on his behalf. But last, last Thursday, the mayor had the honor of joining representatives from the state of Alabama, the Mobile County Commission, the Mobile History Museum, and the Clotilda Descendants Association for ceremonial groundbreaking at the future site of the Africatown Heritage House. The Heritage House is a council project, county project in partnership with the city, the history museum, and many others who came together to create this future museum dedicated to the story of the last slave ship, Clotilda, and Africatown founders. The mayor would like to personally commend the leadership of the Mobile County Commission, President Merceria Ludgood, who has worked tirelessly to create a space within the community that can share the story the right way. Not long after we stood up the COVID-19 vaccination site at the Mobile Civic Center, we began taking, talking with our partners at USA Health about ways to get vaccines to residents who are unable to come downtown to be vaccinated for various reasons. Working with Pastor Williams last week, USA Health and City of Mobile set up a test site, attested a drive-through clinic at Yorktown Missionary Baptist Church in Africatown. They were able to vaccinate 400 people within that community, and we plan to organize more community clinics in other areas of the city as we go forward. Yesterday, the mayor recognized representatives from USA Health, Synergy Laboratories, and the City of Mobile employees, whose creative and persistent efforts have been instrumental in the community's response to COVID-19 pandemic, and presented them with the exceptional citizenship award, which is the highest award or medal presented by the mayor's office. Also on the agenda today is the first read of the city's HUD funding. Jamie Roberts discussed the budget during the committee meeting last week. The funding assists the city in providing affordable and workforce housing, as well as services that revitalize neighborhoods. It remains a key priority for the administration to grow the city through affordable housing, and this funding will help to ensure the goal of building and rehabilitating 1,000 affordable houses by the year 2026. And, Mr. President, that concludes the mayor's remarks.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President.
Mr. Williams.
I don't know about y'all, but I think I might have missed that invitation to the groundbreaking.
I did too.
I just wondered if, could we, could we go back in sent mail and see, see if my email address was incorrectly typed in? This, a tremendous, tremendous day in the history of our city, and the city council was not included. And I, and I'd hate to know that there was an automation glitch that would have precluded the representation of each of our seven districts from being at that momentous event.
Councilmember Williams.
Who, who is, who is that?
This is Anitra Bell Henderson, and we.
Come on, Ms. Bell Henderson.
We, we hope, and as my father says, hope is not a strategy, that there was not an automated glitch, but those invites were sent out by the county commission, and I did forward those to the city council as well.
I didn't know.
I, I didn't see it. Did, did you see it, Gina?
They were 0 for 7 in this case, and if that was a batter, he'd lose his position in the lineup.
Well, you know, for full disclosure, for full disclosure, I did get an invite, but I guess because I committed some resources to it, I don't know, I was not able to attend, but I did get an invitation and, and we were, we were represented in spirit, I imagine, and, and hopefully the ground, the ribbon cutting will be in June, and we will make certain that all seven of us are there with, with bright and smiling faces.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
The absence of seven council members sort of sends a message that this is not important, that you all are doing something out here, but really, it's not monumental, it's not a game changer. They, that's the message we have sent them, and we don't, we, we do not want to send that message. We, we, we see an opportunity for the Clotilda to be a blockbuster, and we, we need to portray that, and we don't want them to know anything, unless, as a matter of fact, I am an indirect descendant of the Clotilda, and I would have been there.
Yes, sir. Well, Ms. Bell Henderson, I think you hear the sentiment of the, of the unanimous consentment of the council, and that we could make certain that any and all of these activities that we are apprised of, it would certainly be appreciated. I know this was led by the county, and, and Ms. Pollard and her staff sent out the invitations. I did not notice who got what, I just noticed I got one, and, and we'll, we'll make certain that that's corrected here from here on out. You all are welcome anywhere in District Two at any time. That was it quick.
Adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President.
Oh.
I moved adoption of the agenda and that all items listed as essential COVID-19 items be declared as such.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, with regard to the monthly financial report, I think you all received an email that that report will be given on next week.
Yes, ma'am.
Appeals, we have requests for wave of noise ordinance on every first Friday of the month for 2021. This is at Moffett Road.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearing today is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend Chapter 64 of the city code to delete Section 64-4 H tree protection requirement.
Is there anyone here or anyone connected that would like to offer any commentary to this particular public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to rezone property located at 704 Lakeside Drive West from B1, I'm sorry, west side of Lakeside Drive West, 150 feet south of Cottage Hill Road from B1 and B2 to B3.
Is there anyone here or anyone connected that would like to speak during this particular public hearing?
I would. Ed Majure.
If you could, sir, if you could state your name and your record, your name and your address for the record.
Ed Majure, spelled M-A-J-U-R-E, and my address, business address is 708 Lakeside Drive West. The lot that joins this property, we're asking to re- rezone on the south side of that property.
Yes, sir. You, you have three minutes to offer any commentary you'd like to share with us.
Okay. Well, I would just like to say, in case the council members are not aware of the property that we're talking about, as far as what's situated around it, I own that vacant lot or the company my wife and I are members of, Major Real Estate LLC. And to the north side of this vacant lot is Mobile Bay Monthly Large Building that separates this lot from Cottage Hill Road. On the west side of this property is Rose Survey and Engineering. On the south side is my business, Armstrong McCall, a wholesale beauty supply business, and my wife's hair salon, main attraction. On the east side, across the road from, from this vacant lot is Thompson Testing and Engineering. There is no residential property that, that joins this property. In fact, I don't know that it even could be seen from a residential property that would have to be in Brandon Estates to the west of Rose Survey and Engineering. It's currently Zon B2. I've had numerous people over the last 10 years, 11 years, telling me, as I've tried to find a business to locate to that property, that, that B2 is basically retail, and no one would want to be in an industrial park with a retail business. You know, I have the property up for sale, but I'd also have considered expanding my current franchise in business to it, possibly with a building that would also have a barber shop or hair salon in it. I service 15 counties in the state of Alabama with beauty supplies. We sell only to the licensed professionals. We do not sell to the public. And I built this building in 2009 that we're in, and we moved from around the corner on Lakeside Drive to this location. And we have hairdressers, barbers, people like that that come and shop in our showroom, and we deliver our products to their hair salons in these 15 counties. And when this pandemic one day is over, I would hope to need to expand, and so that would be a consideration to expand to this, to this vacant lot that adjoins my current location on Lakeside Drive West. So, you know, with that said, I just kind of wanted to give the council members a general idea of, of the situation in here, the businesses that are, are surrounding this vacant lot. And I would hope that you would take this into consideration. It would definitely help me and my business to thrive and, and do more business in the city of Mobile. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Majure, and thank you for your continued investment in our city. Any questions of Mr. Majure?
Mr. President, I'd just like to thank him for doing business in District Four and, and tell him that he should have no concerns about this receiving a favorable consideration by the council.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you for coming, thank you for participating.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other speakers for this particular public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Mr. Butler, did you want to speak regarding the rezoning? Still on?
I believe he had to step away.
Okay. Lee, are you speaking?
We're, I'm here on behalf of the developer, but I don't have any comments at this time.
Okay. Okay, in that case, then we'll move on. Essential COVID-19 items held over. 65006, ordinance to amend Chapter 64 of the city code and to create Chapter 65. To urban forestry, the Mobile Tree Commission, and tree protection and management.
Empty table.
Thank you.
Been properly moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
57009, ordinance to move, to amend Chapter 57, Article 8 of the city code, and to add a new Article 9, small cell facilities on public rights of way.
What's your level for a week?
Second.
Probably moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item was laid over one week.
64036, ordinance to rezone property located at the east terminus of Blue Ridge Boulevard from R1, R2, and B1 to R1.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved to second in the discussion.
Yes, I'd like to offer an amendment at this time, and I will go into the reasons why for the record as well, but I'd like to add a condition that vehicular access to Old Drop, Dobbins Drive North, Parnes Way, and Creek Line Drive at the boundaries of Cottage Hill Subdivision and Autumn Ridge be denied, and to hold this ordinance over until such time that the revised ordinance can be published and a public hearing on the revised version be held. The reason for this, oh, I need to get that to second.
Second.
Thank you.
Been properly moved and second.
Thank you, and if I could just further discuss for the record, Unit 3 opens up to Valley Dale, that is not, we're not asking for that to be restricted at all. It would be landlocked. There are three units, two are connected. The first two units, 1 and 2, would connect at Blue Ridge Boulevard, which is actually a conduit for the Asheville subdivision. They always knew they would grow, there is a stub there, and keeping that within that corridor and denying the access to Carriage Hills would be very wise because of known traffic issues. There was a traffic study done, and this council was kind enough to hold that up for a new study. However, a new study was not warranted, according to the developer and our city traffic engineer. I do feel it was a flawed study based on the dates because schools had been closed via state order. The University of South Alabama had closed as well, and therefore, a lot of vehicular traffic was not counted on those, I believe it was two or three days that they counted at the major intersections on Cottage Hill and Hill Press for any car impact or vehicular impact. The residents met with the representative from this development, and it's never been the zoning. It's welcoming to have a new subdivision in the area, that's not the issue at all. As a matter of fact, it's basically a downzoning. The conditions that the residents were very concerned about was the vehicular traffic it would create, and a traffic study was promised at that meeting way back in June. I understand the frustration that the developer has on this timeline. Unfortunately, we thought within the 90 days initially when this was heard, that there would be maybe an end to the pandemic, such is not the case. However, the idea that traffic will be a problem has never gone away. It's been consistent and known to all parties involved. The Cottage Hill area across from Blue Ridge is very undeveloped at this time, but all those properties fronting Cottage Hill have the great potential to go to commercialization, which will also add in the future to vehicular traffic, trying to reach those businesses and stores that will be developed there someday in the future, which will change, again, looking at long-range planning. Traffic, like I said, is a huge issue on residential streets, is often a negative, and will devalue and make it less family-friendly to live. So I appreciate your support of these conditions and a rehearing where all interested parties can again look at these conditions that hopefully you will place today on behalf of the residents and the stability of neighborhoods that already exist. So again, thank you. I hope I have your support, enough votes to get this in place and another hearing take happen. The hearing has to be at least three weeks. Unfortunately, I'll be traveling again for personal reasons, so I would ask that the public hearing be on, I believe it would be the 30th, so all parties know exactly which date we'd be talking about. Thank you.
Any, any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Williams.
I'm simply going to give my strongest support to the representative of that district. Not only is that, is that right, but it's, it is out of personal knowledge that I, that I support the change. The, this is, this was not, this has not been a surprise. This has been a wish, a desire, a demand, whatever you want to call it, of the residents of that entire community since it began. And I was not at the, at the public meetings that took place within the district and at the planning commission, but I, but I know that, that the intent of, of the residents that I've spoken to personally, that I know personally, were just that, that Ms. Rich so adequately described. So I am, I am absolute full support, and I will stay on that side so long as it takes.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. You, I pretty much echo your sentiments. I'm right there with you.
I, I appreciate that, and one thing I didn't add for the record is that I spoke with our public safety director, who talked about the public safety of connectivity with vehicular traffic. And as I said at pre-conference, the stubs are not open today. No one has access to them today, so it's just making sure that we don't have that access in the.
Yes, ma'am. I, I don't know what you were saying at the very end, I'm sure it was very important, but we didn't hear.
Well, it was just basically, it's a public safety issue. I understand connectivity, and this can be connected by sidewalks, bike paths, jogging paths, as opposed to vehicular traffic, which we already know is problematic.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
This, this is a vote on the amendment.
This is a vote on the amendment offered by, uh, Mrs. Rich.
Thank you.
No problem. All in, here are no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So now we will go back to the item as amended? Am I correct?
No, the, it was, there was a holdover included in her motion.
Oh, yes.
So now it's just held over.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Yeah, we have to go through another public hearing because of these conditions, according to our attorney.
Absolutely. Thank, thank you, Ms. Dollish, for working, uh, with Ms. Rich. And Ms. Rich, thank you for being an advocate and seeing this through, and, uh, we look forward to having the public hearing in the future.
Thank you.
Members of the court?
Sixty-four zero one one ordinance to rezone property located at one oh seven and one eleven North Lafayette Street and one oh six Providence Street from B-one and R-one to R-one.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passed.
Okay, um, I'll take the, uh, next items together. Forty zero five three declare the structure at twenty-seven sixty-six La Crenne Street public nuisance and order it demolished. Zero eight one one three approve purchase order to Bagman Russell for parts and installation for streetlights and battery heights. Zero eight one one four approve purchase order to Deere and Company for seven zero turnmoors. Zero nine one one six authorize reallocation of funds from operating budget to capital budget for security upgrades to multiple public works facilities. Twenty-one one one seven and one one eight are authorizing contracts with Southern Earth Sciences and Macquarie and Williams for Texas Street rehabilitation from Anne Street to Broad Street and Anne Street rehabilitation from Tennessee Street ditch to Virginia Street.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? I'd like to just, uh, uh, let the residents in the, uh, line call community know that after many years, they've been working on a lighting project, uh, for the line call community. Brenda Bolton and, and, uh, about fifteen other of those neighborhood, neighborhood association leaders have been working on this project probably the last thirteen years. And we've finally been able to realize some funding and, and begin, uh, seeing work on this project. So I'm excited about that. In addition to, uh, with the work starting hopefully in April on what is one of the worst streets in the city of Mobile presently, which is Texas Street. And we, we see several, uh, there are two items on this agenda relative to Texas Street today. And look forward to not only, uh, voting on these items, but hopefully the work starting so that we can get improvements to those citizens as quickly as we can. Thank you to everyone who's partnered, specifically our county commissioner, Messeria Ludgood, who always has been a great partner with us on these big heavy lifts, uh, that we have to do in our districts. Thank you so much, Commissioner Ludgood, and, uh, and to everyone who's worked to get these items on the agenda. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
Thirty-one one one nine authorize a grant application to the Southern Rail Commission for an alternate site analysis to support the return of passenger rail service along the Gulf Coast.
Move to table.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, uh, Mr. President. Uh, I, um, just want to express my support for rail service, uh, to the city of Mobile. Uh, when we look at the cities, uh, that, uh, have, uh, Amtrak, they're all way ahead of the city of Mobile for instance. It's not but a hundred and forty-four thousand people in Savannah, Georgia. They had fourteen million, fourteen point five million visitors last year. And by the way, they have the largest container of facility in the United States. Uh, we have a hundred and ninety-three thousand. We had three point five million people. We don't have Amtrak. New Orleans has about, New Orleans has about fifty thousand people more than city of Mobile. Yet they have, um, uh, a professional basketball team, a professional football team, and you just go on and on and on. They are gone. In nineteen seventy-one, when authorized firstly, um, when, uh, Amtrak first had its initial run, New Orleans was added, uh, to the list, and for the last, um, fifty years, they've had Amtrak over there. Conversely, the city of Mobile is almost fifty thousand. I have almost fifty thousand more people than Savannah, Georgia. Yet we're in their shadow. What's the difference? We don't see nothing but rail. We need every mode of transportation. And when we, we're getting ready to, uh, hope have, uh, uh, to add on, uh, the hotels as a blockbuster. Uh, we have, uh, three bowl games. Uh, we have a cruise ship. We have mighty grove. Got the Building Grav Garden, the Moon Pie Draw. I mean, we got beaches. And we are in the shadow of Savannah, Georgia. That beaches, uh, look like, look like mud. The, the color of that sand is the same color of mud. Our sand, sand look like sugar. I am for Amtrak. I don't know of one city that, 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 uh, claimed that Amtrak harmed them. Not one in America. And they have five hundred destinations. And, and I'm going to be voting for this. I understand why we're doing that. Let the record show. Fred Richardson is for bringing every mode of transportation to the city of Mobile that help us to become, uh, a city of destination where people will want to come and see, uh, what is happening to us. We need to, we need to find them to transform every mode of transportation. So I support Amtrak.
And Mr. President.
Mr. Davis?
Been asked to, uh, make, uh, talk about why the council is taking this action to favor this, uh, particular item. And I think it's probably best to explain what the item is. The item is, uh, a request that we authorize a grant application to the Southern Rail Commission for an alternative site analysis to support the return, for the passenger station. An alternative site analysis passenger station for the return of passenger rail. Uh, earlier today, the chairman of the Southern Rail Commission, uh, asked us to table this while the, uh, while the situation concerning the possible impact study, uh, is resolved one way or the other. And, uh, also said, uh, that, uh, if, if, uh, those issues were resolved and if the city, uh, decided to move ahead and decide to support a site analysis that the Southern Rail Commission would at that time, uh, welcome, uh, another grant application. So we're just, all we're doing is, uh, setting this aside while the situation clarifies itself. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Davis. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is tabled.
Twenty-one one two five authorize management agreement with Mobile Botanical Gardens.
Move to layover for two weeks.
Second.
Second. It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Um, I announced this earlier at pre-conference, but the reason to lay this over for a couple of weeks is that the city and the board of the Mobile Botanical Gardens are negotiating this agreement. And the chair of Mobile Botanical Gardens asked that we lay it over for two weeks to, uh, give them time for their negotiations.
Absolutely, Miss Gregory. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is laid over for two weeks.
Essential COVID iv- items being introduced for the first time, sixty-four zero one two through zero three one three five.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis?
I move for immediate consideration of item sixty-one thirty-one, one thirty-two, one thirty-three, one thirty-four, and zero three, one thirty-five. Reminder to layover one week pursuant to council rules.
Second.
And properly moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sixty-one thirty-one, one thirty-two, one thirty-three, and one thirty-four are determining an appropriation to the Lexington Homeowners Association, South Ridge Homeowners Association, Stars Over Mobile, Fluffs of Valor, and Hillsdale Heights Home, homeowners association serves a public purpose and approved payment. Zero three one three five appoint Dar Green to the Solid Waste Disposal Authority.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved in seven. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcement.
Mr. Vice President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like to say to the citizens of District Three. I will be forthcoming next week, uh, with some very important announcements, um, that's kind of exciting in our district, uh, for next week. But I wanted to, um, share with them my announcements today. Of course, uh, Councilman Richardson had acknowledged Black History, um, you know, pretty much every Tuesday, uh, Wednesday of this month. But I wanted to acknowledge for our last council meeting, um, the, uh, the, you know, lift every voice and sing, which is the national anthem for, uh, Negroes. And the words is very powerful, and I would just like to just repeat the, the words. And it says, "Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring. Re with the harmless of liberty. Let our rejoice and rise high as the listening skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of faith that the dark past has taught us."
Hold on a second, Mr. Vice President. Ladies and gentlemen, somebody is on the Zoom and, and you're conducting a very loud conversation while Mr. Vice President is reciting the Negro National Anthem. Put your volume on mute if you are not participating in this meeting. Thank you. If you could start again, Mr. Vice President.
Uh, uh, Mr. President.
They're still going.
Um, Madam President, can you, can you shut this down? Just leave the council on. Shut everybody else off.
Cause it sound like they're watching the Young and the Restless.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring. Re with the harmless of liberty. Let our rejoice and rise high as the listening skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the presence has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun, let us march on to victory as one. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And, uh, truer words have never been spoken, or sung. That song means a lot to not only, uh, persons of African-American descent, but hopefully to, uh, people across this country because they really are some great words, and they mean a lot to each and every one of us. Mr. John Williams from the fourth district. Oh, no announcements. Yes, sir. Ms. Gina Gregory from the seventh district.
Thank you, Mr. President. I couldn't help but, uh, laugh that you, uh, recognized the Young and Restless.
I grew up around it. My mom watches it.
Same here.
That's right.
Uh, just a couple of announcements. Um, we will be scheduling an administrative services committee meeting on March ninth at one o'clock to, uh, continue discussing changes to the tree ordinance, uh, which will be a new Chapter sixty-five. So, um, we will, uh, get that information out to the public as well as the latest iteration. Uh, and Chris is going to send that around to the council, and then it can be made public to anybody who would like to receive it. The other announcement I have, uh, is about Ziegler Boulevard. Uh, I received information this morning that the portion of road that will be closed for a major drainage repair will not be closed until tomorrow. Uh, the initial report said that the road would be closed beginning today. Um, they are working out there, but they don't actually have to close the road off until tomorrow. And it's only a small portion of road from Locarno down to Chalet Drive East. All traffic can be rerouted from the service road. So it shouldn't impact anybody's ability to get in and out of the neighborhood for, uh, any big trucks or oversized vehicles. There would be some detours at Cody and University as well. Both of those run off Ziegler. So anyway, just wanted to update everybody. If you were looking for the road to be closed this morning, it is not and, uh, should not be closed until in the morning. But again, you know, things change as crews are working and they see how, uh, the timing goes. But I just wanted to give you all that update. And I think it's better to be prepared for a closure than not. And as of course, things change, we will keep everybody posted. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Beth Rich from the sixth district.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you, um, members of the Mobile City Council for, um, helping me to amend that, um, ordinance on the rezoning. And I look forward to that debate that will take place at the next public hearing and hopefully a great resolve, um, that builds a great consensus for our community. The other thing is, is that I've gotten some, um, good news that the Greelot improvements, um, that go back many, many years on the medians, um, hopefully will be moving forward. I had a district meeting, I want to say it's two years ago, where we rolled out the plans because we worked with urban, uh, with the Alabama Urban Forestry Department to get those plans drawn. And they're all native plants and it, and, um, instead of the dirt piles out there, which a lot of people complain about, uh, hopefully there'll be some plantings coming up. And, uh, this is the planting season right now, so I'm very encouraged. And I thank the administration and everybody who's working behind the scenes to make that happen. And not to put, uh, Councilman Williams on the spot, but, uh, some of those medians are shared in District Four, and I believe that those will be improved in the future. And, um, I hope to have that. He's, I'm looking at his hand signals. I don't know what they mean, however. Um, those are, um, really important to all the neighborhoods out there with their entry points. And the city should step up and, and, uh, make those as nice as possible under, um, you know, instead of looking at dirt piles out there that attract more dirt, and this way, um, they'll be improved. So I'm looking forward to that and hope that the council will support those initiatives. My office has put, um, discretionary funds and leftover discretionary funds over a number of years. And so, again, I just wanted to let the administration know that I appreciate everyone who's been involved because I know they're working hard to make that a reality. Thanks.
And, um, Mr. President, if I could just, uh, let Ms. Rich in on the hand signals.
Absolutely.
There, there is monies available and upon her, um, prompting, I will certainly be, uh, in full, uh, cooperation with, with that effort. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Wonderful, wonderful. Mr. Fred Richardson from the great first district.
Right. Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I would like to, uh, close out, um, Black History. It's gonna be, uh, the last meeting, uh, we're gonna have in February, and that, that. And that, that also would signal an end to African-American Black History Month. And I want to focus about a minute, just not long, on Black, the music that African-Americans introduced to the nation and how they transformed the world with their music. Blacks introduced jazz, blues, Negro spirituals, rock and roll. And when, when the Europeans came here, sixteen nineteen, no doubt, they brought with them the class, the classics, the classical composers, their music, Beethoven, Mozart, Tchaikovsky, Chopin, Amadeus Bach, Schubert. The, the issue with those, they didn't have no drum. So you can't go to no rockola. You can't go to no entertainment venue in America unless you go into some sort of hall or something, music hall, where you would hear music played, played by these composers. And even when I went to Europe, I couldn't, I couldn't hear any. So what happened is, how, how they transformed this music is that during slavery, the drum was taken from African-Americans because they feared that they could communicate with one another. They could organize some sort of insurrection with the drum beat. So they could not play the drum. Slavery ended. They picked the drum back up and they were the first in the world to assign music, assign the drum to music. It was the first one to establish a beat with music. And when they, when they first started, it was rejected. You couldn't go back and listen to the old country singers. They did not have Johnny Cash, did not have no drums. Hank Williams, Hank was born just twenty miles from where I was born, just north of Evergreen, Alabama. It's where his home is. They, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't use drums. Today, you can Google Russian music. They got drums. You could, I don't care where it is in the world. They, they are using drums because they were first introduced by African-Americans to the music. They would use ceremonies to make a loud noise to signify somebody's coming in, but not to establish the beat. You can get the classics. You won't find that. But, but with Negro spirituals, those songs were, were, they, they were composed out of heart triads and tribulations. And oftentimes, they were sending a greater message to, to the masses. For instance, "Deep River." It says, "Deep River. My home is over Jordan. Deep River Lord, I want to cross over into campground. Oh, don't you want to go to that gospel feast? That promised land where all is peace is a deep river law, but I want to cross over to campground." During slavery, if a slave crossed over to a state where, where slavery was outlawed, they could become free over there. For instance, if you crossed the Kentucky River into Ohio, you, you would be a free person. But you had to make it across all of those states to Ohio to be free. Then they passed the picture to slave law, meaning I can go find my slave. I don't give to in New York. I don't care where they are. I can go and get my slave. Slaves have had to run beyond free states. They went into Canada, but they had to cross the Niagara River, which was a deep river. So the shadowy parts of the Niagara River, slave masters set up camp there because they knew the slaves was going to have to, was going to cross and they was going to catch them because they were going to, they was going to try to cross in the shadowy part of the river. No. They chose the deepest part of the river where the master would not be. And this song, "Deep River," it was, if you want to cross over to the campground, you go find the deepest part of the Niagara River and that's where you cross. If not, you're going to get caught. So this song was sending a message. It's a deep river law. So they jumped in, whether they could swim or not. They wanted freedom so bad, they jumped into the Niagara River and they made their way over. Some didn't. But that's what they chose to do. And this song is a deep river law. But I want to cross over to campground. Thanks, Ms. President.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. "Deep River."
"Deep River."
Mr. Joel Davis from the Fifth District.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a meeting of the City Council's Finance Committee at quarter of twelve in order to take up once again the proposed ordinance, including the real property business privileged license tax applicable to lessors of residential properties. That will be at quarter of twelve. Look forward to seeing you then. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Davis. I just want to remind all citizens of District Two that we have not had any community meetings since the very beginning of this coronavirus pandemic. But we all on the job. And if I can be of some assistance, please call the council office. You can email me at lmanzy@cityofmobile.org. You can call or text at two five one five zero nine four two three nine. We are not running from the issues of our citizens. And if we can facilitate some help in any regard, we're certainly willing to do just that. Thank you for the privilege of serving. There are a lot of great projects occurring in and around our district. There are a lot of great projects that have been consummated, from the Lafayette Heights Park that you see in my background, that we need to schedule a grand opening for, to the new basketball facility there on the avenue. And there's construction going across the length and breadth of our district. It's a great time to be a citizen of District Two and to be a resident of the city of Mobile. And, and I'm appreciative of the opportunity to be a part of leadership in this great city. That concludes my announcements. Other than to advise you, get your shot. Don't listen to these naysayers who are going to be pessimistic about any and everything. I have taken my first one. I did not have one complication. I go today to take my second one. And if they call me on Thursday to get a third one, I'm going. Because that's the way we're going to return to some semblance of normalcy. Over five hundred thousand lives have been touched by this pandemic in less than a year. And we're so blessed and so fortunate that we've been spared thus far, but let's not chance it. Go, take your shots, take your vaccines, wear your mask, be socially distant. If we, if we sacrifice now, we'll be able to reconnect later. And that concludes my announcement. Any other announcements from members of the council? Madam City Clerk, we're appreciative of you and our Assistant City Clerk and our Attorney and Ms. Lana and everyone in this clerk's office, our new Executive Assistant, Ms. Jada Dukes and Ms. Courtney. Thank all of you for all that you all do to keep us as a well-oiled and well-running machine. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
It properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
If not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?